Good afternoon. We are awaiting the fourth, which will present us with a quorum. I'm Howard Shook, Chair of this, the Finance Executive Committee Vice Chair Juan. It's to my right, Mr. Hillis. It's to my left, what we, I cannot call the meeting to order. However, we could take public comment, except I don't believe we have any. Is that correct? I've got one name with a line crossed through. Pam Hooks? Let's just be sure. Pam Hooks? An error. Okay. Thank you. We can move on. We have two presentations and reports today. One is in email form, and those of you at home can find it on the website. And that is on the COVID-19 Funds Report. Ms. Marcy Collier Overstreet has joined us, giving us a quorum, so I will officially call the meeting to order. And I will move approval of the agenda, second by one. Let's open that vote. And Ms. Bakhtiari is joining us. The vote is open. Vote is closed. It'll be five yays. All right, the agenda's been adopted. What do you all want to do with the minutes? Okay, we have a motion and a proper second to approve the minutes of our meeting. The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. All right, thank you. We do have a live presentation if the Department of Customer Service is ready. We're ready. We have copies of your slide deck. Commissioner, how are you?
Good afternoon. So I'm Commissioner Maisha Good. I am the department head of the Department of Customer Service, which is ATL 311 as well. So these are some of our core services that we support. This is just serves as a reminder. But we support all departments, but these are some of our top departments or services that we provide around business licenses, water and sewer, garbage and recycling, graffiti, housing, municipal court, and so forth. And we also have a supportive services arm where this team supports PAD initiatives, housing referrals, and E911 non-emergency. So operating hours are now Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to midnight, and we have various ways to reach us, and these are several of the ways at the bottom of the screen. So we are going to cover two fiscal years, fiscal year '24 and '25, so we would, I would have, I would share year-over-year comparison as we move forward. So in our call volumes for fiscal year '24, '25, you would see in fiscal year '24, our volume was a little lower, much lower than what you saw in '25. We did see an increase. And also, what you may see here is that some abandements that may have happened. You may ask, what is calls presented versus calls handled? So the calls presented are those that were, that hit our IVR. Sometimes the customer will hang up, and so this is what you're seeing, is that discrepancy a little bit. But the calls handled nonetheless was still very high. We also added a live chat component. In the live chat component, we are, you may have saw in fiscal year '24, not that much presented or handled, and it's because we started on a soft pilot. Then we launched it in fiscal year '25 with promoting it through Channel 26 and through social media, and as we're out and about in the community. And we also made our live agent or chatbot very visible on our website as well. At the bottom of this screen, you would sort of see our service levels, average queue time and average handle time. For fiscal year '24 and '25, for those areas, for CSC, which is our customer call center, you would see that our service level remained aligned with what we, what we track. So our calls for fiscal year '24 and '25, 80% of our calls were answered within 60 seconds. So we backed that metric, and our queue time actually increased by two seconds, and then our average handle time increased by a minute and 10 seconds. For fiscal year '25, I mean, sorry, for Supportive Services Delivery Team, you would see in fiscal year '24, their service level decreased by 3%, .3%. However, they're still were at 99% for both fiscal years. Average queue time remained the same at seven seconds, and then average handle time from the start of a call to completion, it was overall one minute 23 seconds was added. So typically, they're averaging about four minutes 30 seconds for, to handle a call. As you can also see for these two areas, there were no hold times, nothing substantially long, no more than 31 seconds or less. For our live chat feature, we've seen good gains here as well. They're able to meet the metric of response time, so the service level here is at 90, 90% and up for both fiscal years. They're averaging, at the close of fiscal year '25, with average queue time of 15 seconds, so there was no hold time for live agent chat as well. And these live agent chats are, starts with our chatbot, and then if they want more information, then they will ask for, and then they'll be transferred to a live agent. And for our average handle time for the live chat, they were averaging to complete a chat from beginning to end in fiscal year '25, 13 minutes and 26 seconds, and in '24, at nine minutes and 25 seconds. This fiscal year, we actually switched to 80/40, so you will see moving forward that new metric in my next presentation, not today. So evening shift call volume. So fiscal year '24, '25 again. So in fiscal year '24, we actually started the expansion. So what you see here is calls presented versus called handled. And for fiscal year '24, the numbers were very low when we started, because again, we rolled it out as a pilot, and then we started marketing it. So we are now seeing the numbers increase for evening shift, and our evening shift is from 3:00 p.m. to midnight. Also, you will see down at the bottom where our metrics are. So this team is also, are able to meet our metrics as well. They're well beyond the 80%, 80/40, or 80/60%, I'm sorry. And then average queue time is, for ending in '25, were at 21 seconds. Our average handle time in '25 was eight minutes 43 seconds. So we did see some positive gains for service level in average queue time, and we did see where our handle time increased by 32 seconds in the evening shift call volume for fiscal year '25. For the Supportive Services Delivery Team, they started to take, their hours extended April 14th of 2025, so therefore, there's no data for fiscal year '24, but what we're seeing in fiscal year '25 is that service level is at 98%, and then their queue time, seven seconds, and then their average handle time is at four minutes 48 seconds. For top three cases from all channels, in the past, I've done top five, but we did something a little different this time, so you'll see later, in a later slide, that we actually did top 10 per district. So right now, what you're seeing is the top three cases from all our channels. So these are our top call volume departments. So for Watershed, what we've seen here is that for the, where can I pay my water bill? We did see about a 68% increase in case submission for this particular request. We saw downwards trends for reporting disclosure, or discolored or odorous water coming out of faucet and boil water advisories. We saw a decrease in those areas. For DPW top three, what we saw was bulk collection requests remain the same as far as the top request, but we did see where there was a gain with case submission for that particular one. And also for the second one, which was missed residential garbage, we saw a 24% increase there. We did see a, where call volume went down somewhat for missing garbage cart for DPW. For Municipal Court, each of these three remain very high, as you can see. However, we did see downward trends for the, for when is my court date in time, and I failed to appear at court, and also we saw a decrease of how much is my court fine and how do I pay it? For code enforcement, top right, fiscal year '25 and '24, we saw a 67% increase in this case request. Code enforcement general information was an increase, but we saw downward trends in code enforcement junk trash and debris and code enforcement overgrowth. So for private property, junk trash and debris, there was a 40% downward, you know, case submission, and there was a 37% decrease in code enforcement overgrowth. For finance, what we've seen for business occupation tax certificate renewal, City of Atlanta, there was a small increase here of 9%, and then registering a new business in the City of Atlanta, there was a 35% decrease there. So we are seeing those repeat calls go away, and the number is decreasing. And for business tax amendments, there was a 23% increase here. For ATL DOT, for fiscal, for both fiscal years, we saw increases in these three areas, areas. One is potholes. We saw 18% increase there. Non-emergency traffic signal repair, a 49% increase in emergency traffic signal repair, 14% increase. So for Supportive Services, with Housing Help Center and Policing Alternatives and Diversion Initiative, Wishes PAD, and City of Atlanta Emergency Shelter Referrals, we saw upward numbers in the housing help and for emergency shelter referrals, but we also, but we did see a decrease in PAD for those fiscal years, and particularly fiscal year '25. And lastly, for top services for our chatbot and IVR, so we're seeing some trend, downward trends here. So for missed residential garbage cases, there was a negative 9%, which means that there was a decrease. Potholes coming through this channel was negative 16%, and damaged garbage cart repair or replacement coming through the IVR at negative 49%. For fulfillment cases closed within service level agreement, this only covers at the top fiscal for, fiscal year '24, '25 quarter four only. And so what you see here are from Watershed, Department of Transportation, Parks and Rec, Code Enforcement, Finance, and Municipal Court, mostly increase, or decreases, I'm sorry, in fiscal year '25. So where there was, so for instance, for Watershed, 77% in '24, but in fiscal year '25, it was a 61% of cases closed within SLA. Public Works remained the same. They were able to respond with our answer within 80%. Resolution of the cases sent to them from our team in both fiscal years. For transportation, they went from 47% to 26%. Parks and Recs, 36% to 35%, and Code Enforcement, 96% to 33%. We did see where Finance did pretty well, at 90% in '24, and then fiscal year '25 at 96% with response and resolution. Municipal Court, we saw in fiscal year '24, 93%, and then in '25, it was 79% response and resolution. At the bottom of this page, year-over-year, you'll see SLA trends for both fiscal years. And I think what we can point out here is that most of the departments did fairly well overall. ATL DOT and DPR, we did see where in fiscal year '25, their SLA decreased overall year-to-year. For case hotspots by district, and this is where, this is something new that we've added, so you would see the top 10 cases for, that we received. And what you would see here is for, where we saw like the most volume for both fiscal years, for fiscal year '24, we saw overall volume from District 12. And for District 8, what we saw was three or more case types that were sent into that, the district. For the others, it was either one, two, or none, and that was very high compared to the other two districts. For District, for fiscal year '25, it was similar, same thing. District 8 and District 12 were, where we saw either a lot of cases of the same pattern from previous fiscal year, or the overall volume was very high in District 12. And some of the cases that were called in to these districts were like bulk collection requests, damaged garbage cart replacement, missed residential garbage, missing garbage cart, and so forth, potholes, missed yard trimmings. So hopefully, this gives you a little insight to the districts. So our back office stats, here you would see on the right side, cases per channel. You would see where it says chatbot, email, fax, IVR, mobile phone, and web. So our back office team processed cases coming through these channels. We did see, you see the green? It was a peak there, but this was during the time of our transition from our old CRM, Customer Relationship Management System, to the new. So this is particularly focused on emails. So when we transitioned to the new system, we noticed that there was a, this is spike, and it was because from our old system, we were not able, we had a no-response email that was associated with emails, and so now we changed that. So now what you're seeing is actual data that's specific to the ATL 311@AtlantaGA.gov email, which gives us better insight to, to the emails that we're receiving. Also, to the left, cases processed per department. This team typically, for the last two fiscal years, have processed a lot of cases from Watershed, Public Works, and APD, with ATL DOT coming in fourth. And we've seen where in '24, it was a little bit more volume overall, but nonetheless, they were able to meet their metrics as well. Escalation cases processed. So in fiscal year '24 is more of a manual process, but when we transitioned to the new system, now we're able to capture escalation-type data, which was implemented July 1st of this year. And so now we're able to capture premature closures for all departments. So what you see here, we have identified three of the departments that where escalations are coming from. Typically, this is when a SLA or a case is out of SLA, or this is where something has turned into a hazardous situation, so they're calling us and say, hey, y'all need to get here, right? So what you see to the right is for DPW, 133 was outside of SLA, and this is only focusing on July of 2025, nothing else. Moving forward, you would start seeing like a year-over-year trend. And then for end of fiscal year, for July 2025, for DPW, there was 61 premature closures, which we worked very closely with interim Commissioner Quintoria Garmin and his team at the time. And so for ATL DOT, we saw 65 that were out of SLA, and then 11 that were premature closures, and we also have a very close working relationship with Commissioner Caviness and his team. And then for DPR, we saw two that was out of SLA, and then one that was premature closed. So what we're doing here, and we have that same relationship, just want to say that as well, but, but what I do want to say is that now we have better insight, and I think it will help you all too, as you're looking at the data that we send to you. But nonetheless, we treat every, every case important that comes to us and make sure that they're resolved in a timely manner with the support of the departments. Social media stats. And so what you see on this slide is year-over-year as well, fiscal year '24, '25. Social media's top cases are coming from DPW, ATL DOT, and DWM. Their total cases per volume is not as much as the other channels, but they do fabulous work, but their total case volumes for both years were coming in over 3,600 plus for, for these that were processed. Now, for messages received per platform, we have seen a slight decrease in X, but we have seen an increase in Instagram and Facebook. We are still getting complaints or concerns through C Click Fix, Nextdoor, and Reddit as well. And so this is where the social media volume comes in at mostly is online. Our total followers have gained, have increased somewhat, but again, we are, we did see like a small downward trend in X. This team continues to get a lot of kudos that are mentioned here about the great service they continue to provide. This slide, in Slide 12, these are two new slides that we added. I know there was a request about post-call survey. So what you're seeing on Slide 11 here is 311's surveys and what we receive. And this is at the, at the initial point of call, right? So what we're seeing is that there is a lot of engagement. However, the response rates are not as high as we would like for them to be, but we do know there's a 10% industry standard for response rates. So we did look into that, but we are still promoting surveys at the, at each call, and also on every channel that we, we have. For 12, Slide 12, this is post-call survey by department. So we are working with AIM to build this out a little further, because the only thing you can, we can see right now is the total of surveys that are sent out, and the response rates for each of the fiscal years, but we are trying to go to the next level where we are able to send out another survey once the work is completed, and that's what we're working with AIM on. For Human Resources Overview, here you would see in fiscal year '24, we had about 132 total positions. We had field during that time, 107 with an 81% field rate with 25 vacant positions. In fiscal year '25, you saw that total position number drop from 132 to 156, and this is due to, just looking at what we needed, right? And so we were able to drop some of those positions. However, many of them were vacant as well, 29 vacant positions. So once we looked at what we had and assessed, we determined that we needed to drop at least 20 positions, which we did. So this fiscal year is 136 positions total for our departments, and we are at total vacant positions, but on tomorrow, August 14, we will have seven new agents rolling onto our workforce, so that will decrease our number down to six vacancies. For fiscal year '26, employee tenure information, this is something new we added as well, so you could just sort of see the length and time of our employees. Most of our employees come in through the zero through nine years of service with us. We did have three to recently resign, one due to a personal reason, but the other two due to outside employment opportunities. I'm sorry. For Budget Overview, I know this is something you all requested as well. So this only shows our general fund. So we are split funded by Watershed, Public Works, and of course, the general fund, as I said, but most of our funding comes from Watershed and, I mean, sorry, general fund at 45%, but Watershed come in at 40%, and then lastly, Public Works with 15%. Here, what you're seeing in bold at the bottom of each of these charts is the, where it says 13, or 15% for fiscal year '24, and 6% for fiscal year '25. This is the cost savings, so that total comes from the aggregate calculation of all three funds, not just the general fund. So we did have a cost savings in both of those fiscal years, and then for fiscal year '26, you can see that we're just really getting started. So we're really, we're at a 99% remaining of funds. For operational highlights, I'm not going to go through all of this, but again, we have seen positive results with our metrics, and we're continuing to really store in these areas of phone, live chat, and, and also what we're seeing is we completed some comprehensive skill gap development initiatives. So every agent in our, on our team is trained to answer any call now. When they're on board, they are trained in every area. So we're excited about that, which also constitutes to not having a hold times, right? And we're able to answer fairly quickly. And also, we successfully went from a midnight shift, I mean, to a midnight shift, and we are continually assessing that, right, to determine if we need to expand further or not. But we're going to let the data tell us, and then if needed, we would definitely share that with administration. However, we do feel like where we are today, we're doing fairly good, and I think it's getting the attention now that, that was, that we're hopeful. Now, the training team also conducted some career-building opportunities, and because we believe in upward mobility- And because we believe in upward mobility, we want to make sure there's some shadowing, career training. So HR did partner with us on this to where they just really share how to build an effective resume, how to interview, because we do have positions that are opening. So we want to make sure that our team get, you know, get the opportunity to interview. Social media and outreach. So we're seeing where our team is out. You know, we were able to interact with over 18,000 constituents, community members, just sharing what 311 do, but also submitting cases on their behalf and escalating issues as needed. So we're continuing to still be out there. We're also promoting our content very heavily on channel 26. So we do appreciate all departments that are supporting us in this and sharing their, sharing our information on their social media channels. But Mayor's Office of Communication has also been very supportive as well. So tune into channel 26 and you'll see a lot of our graphics there. For supportive services, we're, we recently took on Department of Grants and Community Development's calls for housing opportunities for persons with AIDS. So that service started in recently. And so we'll have more information around that as we proceed. And then records management data insight. So here you would see at the bottom, open records request. So our open records request is, is, it just increased by 2.21%. Our total complaints received for all departments increased by 83.48%. But in 24, complaints received for departments, it was at 17, 1,732 complaints. And then for 25, 3,178. And this is just really, you know, individuals calling in just to voice their concerns about a matter. And we shared this with the departments. And then for total compliments for all departments, we saw a 13.39% increase in this area. So in 24 was 112 compliments and in 127 in 2025. So this data overall reveals positive trends, especially in public, public engagement, service appreciation and operational consistency. And so we will continue to track this for, you know, for future reports. Now for the next two slides, technology project enhancements, this is something I just keep here. You would see for fiscal year 25, we were able with the support and strong collaboration partnership with AIM to onboard a few things. So our, in E911, IVR enhancement that continues to go strong. So all their non-emergency calls hit our portal first, our IVR first. And then for open AI chatbot, live agent chat, I talked about that in great deal. We rolled that out, we expanded our business hours. And in our AI kiosk phase one, which is down in the atrium, we have already put general information in Spanish. Then Microsoft Dynamics Phase One. So in Phase One, they, we, we determined that there is still some need for enhancements. So we are continuing to enhance Microsoft Dynamics so that we can make our agents, what they do on the phone easier and also make the customer experience better as well. We are looking to enhance in Microsoft Dynamics integration points. So Waterworks will be integrated. We will enhance Inquesta. So we have a basic level of Inquesta now, but we're going to enhance that a little bit more. And then 311 social media will be integrated fully into Dynamics. AI kiosk phase two will be case creation. And then our IVR will be continued to be enhanced with AI and advanced analytics for even better tracking and efficiencies. In live agent chat phase two, we're going to do add a transfer component. So even though now they can do chatbot to live agent, the third leg would be live agent to phone if a customer wants to speak to someone by phone. AI generative chatbot, this is just continuous upgrades to the chatbot around content generation, simulating conversations and just further understanding. So it's a learning path that the chatbot will take on. And then the collaborative in connect path pieces, this is really for scheduling, forecasting, just enhancing what we do with our employees around their scheduling, better data exchange, adding a chatbot feature there, and then also improving our phone operations. And I think that's it for that slide. And then lastly, you would see a few pictures of us around town. The picture, the picture to the left is basically our team with welcoming Atlantis. So this is a part of the Mayor's Office of International Immigrant Affairs. To the top right is our intern with one of our 311 ambassadors. And to the bottom right is our ambassadors out in the community. And before I close, I just want to always say thank you to the ATL 311 employees. The success of this department isn't built on policies or plans, it's built on people, which is very important to me. Everyone we've had, every challenge we've overcome is because of the dedication, creativity and heart that they bring to work every single day. I could not do any of this without any, with them, without any of them rather. So from the bottom of my heart for everyone that's watching, thank you ATL 311 for showing up, giving your best and making a difference. With that, I am complete, I'm done. Any questions?
All right, thank you for that detailed report. Let me mention that we have the COO here with two commissioners in waiting, each of whom is a subject of a communication that we ruled that we need to take up. I've just been informed that the COO needs to leave here around 2:20. So if there's no objection, if you could just stick around and we'll deal with our two communications, then we'll bring you back up because I know there's some questions and comments. All right, thank you. Let me read the caption. Item G1 is 25C 0095, communication from Mayor Dickens, appointing Mr. Calvin Blackburn III to serve as Commissioner of Human Resources for the City of Atlanta. And 25C 0096, communication from Mayor Dickens, appointing Ms. Chandra Houston to serve as the Chief Procurement Officer of the city. Madam COO.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. Again, Lachandra Burks, Chief Operating Officer. Thank you for this opportunity. And I also want to thank Commissioner Good and the entire 311 department team for the great work that they're doing. We've been spending a lot of time in cabinet, just really digging into how technology can help improve our services. And they have kind of been our number one model department in that. And so I just want to thank them and the entire team, as she says, those watching and those who are in here. A big thanks to you all for the work that you are doing. And so what we have before you today is a communication from the mayor regarding Mr. Calvin Blackburn to serve as the Commissioner of the Department of Human Resources. And it was interesting as I was reading the two bios, I was like, here we go with another native Atlanta, product of Atlanta Public Schools. I think it just happens sometimes that way. But he is also a graduate of Dartmouth College, received his law degree from Vanderbilt University School of Law. And for nearly 23 years, he worked in the private sector as labor and employment litigator for various law firms in Atlanta and in Alabama. But it was in 2020 that he became very wise and joined the City of Atlanta Department of Law, where he was ultimately promoted to Division Chief for Litigation. In July of 2024, Mr. Blackburn started serving as interim commissioner and HR. And during the time that he has served as interim, he has helped to stabilize the department and drive the completion and implementation of several important projects, some including the citywide class and compensation study, which we are all familiar with and spend a lot of time on. And I would just say on behalf of Mayor Dickens, we would ask for your support in him becoming the permanent commissioner for the Department of Human Resources. And I don't know how you want to do this, Mr. Chair. Do you want to hear from Mr. Blackburn? And then, and I can definitely wait and then take Ms. Houston separately.
Yeah, let's take them in order. That seems fair.
And I know I may have another meeting, but I'm never in a rush if I need to stay a little longer, I'm here for you all.
But we appreciate that.
Well, not all day, council member. All right.
All right. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, good afternoon. To Chair Shook, Vice Chair Juan. Thank, and first of all, thank you, Madam COO, for the lovely introduction. I am Calvin Blackburn. I've been serving for the last year or so as the interim commissioner for the Department of Human Resources, having an opportunity to come before you all a fair number of times. And I humbly submit my request, if you will, I'm glad to appear for an opportunity to serve as the permanent commissioner for HR. Since joining in July, we've had a number of important initiatives we've had to take care of in HR. First and foremost, really being stabilized in the department. I have a great team that I work for, a hundred some odd employees. And before I go any further, just want to take a moment and thank them for their support. They've coalesced around me from the beginning and they've continued to work hard, they bought into the vision and we've gotten a great deal accomplished. So I just want to take a moment of personal privilege to ask anybody from HR here, if you're here, stand, be acknowledged, want to thank you all for your support. And to those watching as well, we couldn't have gotten to this point without them and their belief in me and willingness to work hard. Just wanted to take a moment just to touch on a few of the things we've accomplished since I had the privilege of joining in July of 2024. Of course, we mentioned the class and compensation study, phase one was completed and it affected and impacted in a positive way all of our employees. Phase two, we're working on diligently, that will be implemented in January 2026. We also completed, you may remember, vacation carryover. And some of the more boring things have happened that are important, but we don't talk a lot about open enrollment is happening. People are getting paid every two weeks and that's important to remember that we get that done. Again, part of what makes HR good is that we are, we get some of the boring, quiet things done that are important. So just want to make sure you're aware of that. Vacancy review board, we've implemented recently. And you know, we're holding commissioners, we're holding departments accountable for business related decisions for hiring and making sure we're fiscally sound as far as the general fund is concerned on our hiring. We threw great work in the team, were able to get the 2026 budget across the finish line and thank the team for their support and for council, 18.2 million dollar budget. We have worked hard on the return to in-person work process. That, that, that was a great deal of work, standing up places for people to, you know, building down on Two Peachtree and working to get people back in place and also chasing down those who have not been compliant as well. We also have coming up too, we're very excited about the total rewards program. Our team under the leadership of Director Salmon and as well as DC, DC Finley, I don't know, I don't know if she's here, we're working on producing something for every employee, which will show the complete benefit, the total paycheck that you get here at the city, not just your paycheck, but your benefits, your pension, all of that, what that means. And this really shows that as far as municipal employers, the City of Atlanta is a, is employer of first rate. And that's coming out soon. We were very excited about the mental health fair that we launched at the, the public training center that went over very well. And we're understanding that we're servicing in a new and more progressive and effective way our public safety officers. And I think that touches on what we have accomplished and looking forward, I just think we are really excited about where we're going. That's part of why I want to continue to work on what we're doing. We're looking at, as we move toward this fiscal year, getting the right people in the right positions and holding departments accountable for hiring that makes sense and that's fiscally sound, there's a budget basis for it and that it's budget friendly. And some of the things we're going to be rolling out are staffing ratios to make sure we're staffing the right people, the right number of people per position. Also, we're going to implement more objective, not saying we don't use objective standards, but performance management tools to make sure that we are holding people accountable for performance, that when it's time for promotion, we actually have objective indicia to support that and that we are just moving in the right direction. I really want HR, as we move forward, to be committed to again, servicing, providing first rate customer service to all our departments and making sure we have the right people in the right positions and that we retain them and we develop them. So that's what I'm looking forward to doing as we move forward. I don't know if you have any questions for me, but I'd like to continue with what we're doing and moving forward to making, just moving Atlanta forward with the right people and right personnel, the right mindset. And let me take a moment of also privilege, I want to thank two leadership that has been valuable to me and helping me navigate over the last year or so. First of all, COO, thank you for your leadership, DCO Ingram as well. And also I have so many friends across the city, you know, I come from the law department and I would be remiss if I didn't thank them. City Attorney Patrice Perkins Hooker, I have many friends here from the law department who've guided me along, along the way. I see Brian Paxton in the audience also, Amber Robinson, and a fair number of employees there at the city, Sharon Hamilton Broach, just any number of people there who've helped, Shamir Richardson, tons of people there who've guided me along the way. And we build a great relationship, ongoing relationship with the law department. So I thank all of them. And I, I, I ask, I used to be in sales, so you always ask for the business, right? So I ask again for your support, ask for your vote, happy answering the questions.
Oh, be careful what you wish for. So for procedural purposes, I'll make a motion to approve and then, and then I know we have some questions and comments, so second by one. So just a couple of quick things. First of all, remind us, how long have you actually been on the job?
I've been on the job here at, well, joined the city in August 2020. Let me tell you, my current job, yes, July of 2024.
Okay.
A year and change.
What, so during that time, what part of your job that you thought was going to be lower on your to-do list has elevated up into like the top two or three?
Oh, that's, that's an interesting question. What was going to be lower?
Yeah, something you didn't really think you were going to have to worry about, but turns out you got to worry about it.
Well, the, the concerns we had about budget and hiring, I didn't realize until we got here and I looked at, you know, in a lot of conversations with the CFO, realized the challenges we had, we did, challenges with hiring and making sure that we were controlling our hiring. So that was something I wasn't aware of until I got here and understood that, that's something we really want to focus on, controlling our hiring and making hiring decisions that make business sense. And so I've had to focus a lot more time on that than I was anticipating.
So here's my, here's my one comment, we all want you to succeed. We all want you to succeed. If you haven't already learned it, you will learn that if something comes up where one or more city employees think that something has gone wrong, the, the usual path is to come to one or more council members as part of their seeking of redress. And so one way you can help yourself is to just be available to us. Because we understand if an employee comes and, you know, with a terrible story, that's something we may, may not be able to appropriately discuss on camera, but we're sure to want to ask you about it off camera. So to the extent, you know, you can be open to those discussions, I think that'll be very helpful others. Anyone else?
I, I just wanted to say thank you for helping my office, everything you're doing to help advocate for employees alternative, alternative mental health options. And thank you for taking all of my requests and researching all the things I've thrown your way, really appreciate it.
Thank you, my pleasure.
All right, if there's nothing else, we have a motion and a second. Let's put them to work.
That vote is open.
And the vote is closed? All right, the eyes have it so ordered, congratulations.
Thank you very much, thank you.
We're working with you. All right. Ms. Houston is up next.
All right, thank you again, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Lachandra Burks, Chief Operating Officer. The communication before you right now from Mayor Andre Dickens is appointing Ms. Chandra Houston to serve as the Chief Procurement Officer for the City of Atlanta. And I will say on both of these searches, we did extensive national searches and we interviewed and had panels, had two or three panels that interviewed multiple people across the US, but happy that we landed with these two candidates. But Ms. Houston is a seasoned legal professional with over 30 years' experience in corporate and transactional law, serving both large and small companies. Before entering to her current role, she was the Deputy City Attorney in the City of Atlanta, leading Business Services Law Division in support of procurement, real estate and city contractual matters. Chandra's corporate experience includes serving on the executive leadership team at Georgia Pacific's North America Conservative Products Division as the Director of Compliance, where she established the division's first compliance and ethics program. Another native of Atlanta, Ms. Houston also lives in the Old Fourth Ward neighborhood and often talks about the leadership that she contributed to the development of the neighborhood master plan, which spurred significant development in the area, hence us having now Councilmember Bakhtiari Task Force. now Councilmember Bakhtiari Task Force around Edgewood and that community. But additionally, Ms. Houston was appointed by Governor Roy Barnes to serve on the McPherson Implementing Local Redevelopment Authority, a Georgia State graduate. And she received her Juris Doctorate from Howard University School of Law, where she ended in the top of her class and we're not surprised at that. And I have to say that I have done it personally, the mayor has done it personally, but I also want to publicly thank Madam City Attorney, Patrice Perkins Hooker, who, when we went to her to ask that these two individuals come in an interim role, I can't say that she graciously gave them over. She sent them while she was kicking and screaming because of the contributions that they had made to the law department, which we also happened to see in them and asked that they serve in these interim roles. So with that, we would ask your support for Ms. Chandra Houston as the Chief Procurement Officer for the City of Atlanta.
Well, thank you again. Procedurally, I'll make a motion to approve. Second by one. Anyone with questions or comments?
Yeah, I've had the pleasure of working with Ms. Houston since she has become in this new role, this procurement role. And she was invaluable during the task force reform, the procurement reform task force. We had several meetings and I'm here to tell you that she is not running from any of our issues that we've discussed over the years with our procurement. And she is bringing knowledge and expertise to the table around processes, transparency. It, it was no limit to what she was willing to tackle. I do believe we have quite a few things that we will be plotting and, and showing for, facing over the next couple of months. I'm very thankful to have you on our team. It is, if I had tried to plan this, it wouldn't have worked this way, but I actually sent around the, the summary report from our procurement task force to add into our records for the Finance Exec Committee. And I had no idea that it would be in this timing today. So it's all kind of where it's supposed to be and I'm, I'm happy to have you be our next procurement officer for sure. I think that you are bringing quite a few changes to the city that we may have had in the past and somewhere along the way it dropped off and, and now you've, you've picked, picked it right back up and you're boldly doing that. And with a level of expertise that I believe is absolutely needed. So thank you for that. So I'm, I'm very much supportive.
Thank you. Others? I will just say that I've enjoyed the conversations we've had.
Yes.
You know, you've just been very straightforward. We all recognize there's a lot of room for improvement in the processes which you now oversee. Sadly, I will not be here to see your reforms bear fruit, but I look forward to hearing good things from my colleagues and I know Ms. Overstreet is going to be willing to spend as much time with you as it takes as she moves forward. Anyone else? All right, just been a proper motion with a second. Let's open the vote.
The vote is open.
We'll see.
Vote is closed.
All right, the eyes have it so ordered.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember.
All right, thank you. Ms. Evans, could you sound our consentant? Oh, we have to go back. I'm sorry, we have to go back to Commissioner Good because we have Mr. Hillis first and then followed by Ms. Bakhtiari.
Hello again.
Hey, thank you Chairman Shook, thank you for the presentation, Commissioner Good. And first of all, just want to say thanks to you and your team for the job you all are doing.
Thank you.
Highlighted by, you know, if nothing else, the 90% soon to be, sounds like 95 plus percent fill rate of the department. So a great job there and hopefully you can spread some of that throughout our other city departments.
Thank you.
So before I get into, I know there's a lot of presentation on individual departments' performance and I'm sure myself and some other colleagues will get into those numbers, but I wanted to first focus on kind of the issues of 311, which you and I have spoken about over the years and are both uniquely familiar with. So for many years and of course I, I became familiar with 311 right, right when it started and used it probably more than anybody between whatever date that was and 2020. And a lot of the issues I know were caused by a change in IVRs without making sure stuff was compatible. And then I was told, you know, a new IVR is going to solve all this stuff. So a few things, kind of three points to talk, to talk through because I've, I've tried to start using this format again, just to see how the performance is instead of just, you know, a lot of the times us council members just email department heads or our contacts in departments directly. So number one, I will start with the online website format. So if you go online, at least when I, when I go on just, you know, no login or anything, the only option you appear to have is to use a chatbot, which a lot of people do not want to do. Even if you go on and click on the button to create a new case, it just pops up the chatbot. And a lot of people know what they want to report, they don't want to necessarily talk to a chatbot for, you know, two, three plus minutes. So I'll start with that and we'll ask, is that something you are aware of? And if so, what is the resolution to that?
Yeah, so we actually escalated that this last evening, as a matter of fact, because we realized it was a glitch of some sort. So what's going to happen, AIM is meeting with our team either today or tomorrow to get that issue resolved because when you click on the chatbot and you X out of it, it still pops up, right? And so it should not happen that way. So the goal is to still offer the chatbot, but when you hit the X, it goes away and then you could go, you know, however way you want to submit your case. So yes, we, we are aware and working on it.
Okay, thank you. That, that's great to hear. Now, moving on to what I formerly used the most before it went down with the IVR issue was the mobile app. So on the mobile app, a few things. Number one, it looks like unless you are logged in, which requires it be registered, your only option is to submit a case anonymously and you can't input your email address or your name, et cetera. And then when you do it that way, you do not get a case number given to you, you do not get an SLA, et cetera. And it also, so I, I need to also evaluate it because I, I'm sure I have a login somewhere over the years, but I would, I will need to find it. And then another issue with when you're on the chat, and again, I, I don't know if it's in the online system as well because I can't get to it because you got to talk to the chatbot. But if I want to say type in, you know, 1825 Main Street or something, you type in, whether it's a street name, if you're reporting an intersection or you're trying to type in a numerical, literally everything across the world pops up. Like you type in 1825 and you get an address in, you know, Cypress, Texas or something. You type in, you know, trying to type in Perry Boulevard to indicate an intersection, you get, you know, Perry, Tennessee or something. So is there a way that we can get with that vendor to, hey, let's narrow down these places to actual places that exist within our jurisdiction?
Yes, so I will speak to AIM about the mobile app and chat issue you brought to my attention and we'll make sure to get these issues resolved as soon as possible.
Thank you. And then lastly, as you may or may not know, I, I serve as the co-chair of the Justice Policy Board, which oversees that our diversion center partnership with Fulton County. And we had a focus, a yearly focus group a few months ago and I, I guess I would have to say I chose to be in the 911, 311 focus group. There were six, six or so focus groups and that was one of them. And one of the issues that, that I had previously known about and we actually tested it there just to make sure I wasn't, you know, crazy or something or it was a one-time issue. And I understand that, you know, 311 is the catch-all for anything and everything across the city unless, you know, you, you need 911 and emergency services. But I believe it would be very beneficial if we moved up that request for diversion services. Because when you dial into 311, it is at least, I believe it was slightly over two minutes, simply going through prompts to get to a person. Now, once you've completed all of the prompts, at least at that time of day, we were responded to very quickly, someone picked up the phone. But, you know, when people are out, you know, trying to report a situation that, you know, a diversion pad may have to be dispatched to, you know, they're driving, you know, they, they certainly don't want to go through two minutes of prompts just to get to a live person to, to try to get help on the way.
Yes, so I was hoping today I would have had the IVR modified already, but we are in the process of modifying the IVR and we'll work with AIM to get that sped up for you. So I have noted that and we'll move it up as much as we can, but E911 is, or 911 is always first and then we have to offer Spanish speaking and then we'll see if we can add that one up a little further.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lastly, and I may let my, I, I was good in transportation today, so I may let my colleagues, one who, who wasn't in transportation today kind of handled this, but you know, the, the numbers are kind of mind blowing for, for these department reports with transportation, parks and recreation, code enforcement. And I think we probably all kind of, we're not just looking at numbers, we're kind of feeling that as well as we try to report issues. 26, went from already bad numbers to really bad numbers, 47% to 26%, 36 to 35, 96 to 33 with code enforcement. I've certainly felt that one as well. You know, kind of, I think you spoke to some of it, the COO spoke to some of it, but you know, what, what do we do with these numbers? Do y'all have, say, hey, you know, we got, we got your report card, it's kind of, it's time to come in, talk to the principal's office and let's work through these numbers, why is this happening?
Yes.
What, what, what happens with these numbers when, when y'all report out to the COO and the mayor and the cabinet meetings that we're spoken about?
We, we actually send to most departments weekly, monthly data. We also have meetings with our portfolio managers, with, with our relationship managers in those departments. And I also have set up quarterly or, I'm sorry, monthly meetings with commissioners, myself and them. So they are aware of the data and they're working to get those issues resolved as much as they can with, so I do think it, it may have, as they come in to report to you all, maybe just report on the services or what they're doing with their resources and, but I can tell you that each of them, they are aware and working as hard as they can to get the issues resolved.
Thank you. And, and lastly, just kind of going back to the generalities with the 311 system, the complaint that I get still the most ever since 311 started and, you know, we've talked about trying to fix this is people spend, you know, three minutes talking to the chatbot or someone live, reporting on the app about, you know, a pothole or miscollection or, you know, they haven't, they've tried three times now to get a, a garbage bin delivered and they get this, your case has been closed. And that is not how the system should work. I understand that, you know, sometimes, you know, y'all are, y'all must be closing cases because it gets sent into an apartment or maybe the apartment, as soon as they get it, they close it because they put it on some list somewhere. But to the everyday Atlantan, a, a closed case means that, hey, this issue has been resolved. And that unfortunately, no pun intended, but that isn't the case when the case is closed.
If you can, that would be, if you could send that to me when you hear those, that would be very helpful so that we can investigate it.
We get a lot of emails.
Okay. Just a handful over time, right? At least two or three, because I really love to investigate them to see if that, what's happening in the backend, right? Whether it's 311 or the department, because if the cases are closed, it, it should not be closing if the issues are not resolved. And then secondly, I want to check to see if it's a glitch maybe, right? But I just want to investigate a little further because it's, that shouldn't be happening.
Yeah, because I mean, if it is happening, it's obviously making, I mean, already bad numbers across many departments perhaps look even better than they actually are. So I saw my colleagues shaking their heads, shaking their heads too, but you know, that's an issue we, we've had since 311, you know, became a thing. So just wanted to put that back on the radar. But again, thank you and your team for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi Commissioner.
Hi.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for being here. And I first want to start by saying, thank you for this detailed report, like this is incredible information. I thought Councilmember Juan was going to, he was like giggling with glee and excitement over here over the level of information that was provided. So we really appreciate that and I would really love for other departments to take note for their updates because this actually gives us tangible things that we can work on and understand root causes of issues. All of that being said, I do want to echo Councilmember Hillis in terms of, it feels as though, I don't, I have not been here as long as my colleagues, I can tell you though, in the short time I have been here, it feels that this is kind of the, I don't want to say worse it's been, but the worst it's been in terms of case closes and proper, and like, and project managers and getting things across the finish line and communication. I know that that is not reflective of you and actually I'm quite frustrated because 311 is the public facing office that has to catch the flak for the lack of follow-through in other departments. And that simply is just, I want to thank you for always taking that flak because it is, I believe we can also resonate with that. But I would, I do want to also say in terms of troubleshooting, I also want to commend you and joy in the team for that because every time we've had an issue and I sent it to you all, you've been able to troubleshoot and find out why. So I do want to say that, but I, I mean, given this information, do we know the root causes of why we see such an uptick? Bless you.
Bless you.
Sorry, Councilmember Juan is disrupting my questioning. So do we know why this is, why these numbers are going up? I'm, I'm, we have good people in these departments and I know we do and I just don't understand why ATL DOT's number is where they are, why clearly DPR has had issues with case management for the last two years in terms of execution and closing. And I'm actually surprised that Watershed's numbers aren't quite like, we, this body has been talking and we're also having a lot of trouble getting any responses from Watershed right now. So I'm curious as to if there's any information on root causes of why this is currently taking place because we are all definitely feeling it.
But first, thank you for your compliment, but secondly, mostly before what we heard is resource allocation and that, you know, and that's really the brunt of it. So other than that, we are working very closely with them, with the departments and just being very transparent, even in the community when we're out, we're showing data as well. And those departments are there, there too, you know, they're there, but mostly it's resource allocation.
Yes, and I, I believe my colleagues are going to ask more questions and follow-up on that piece. I know that we have incredible people in our departments, I know because I, we get to work with them every day. And this necessarily isn't just a message for you all, but for everyone to leadership. If communication, I, I don't know if I speak for all my colleagues, but if there is a resource and staffing issue, completely understand that. Look at the times we're in, I get it. But I believe that there has been a tradition of telling council what they want to hear versus the reality of the situation. I think that that forces our workforce to be political people pleasers and just the message to you all is like, I, like, if we know what's going on, we can better advocate for our departments. So it reaches a fever pitch when we hit these numbers and we don't understand why.
I understand. And also I want to say, there were instances where there were emergencies throughout this city as well, so that could be another added addition to some of the metrics not being met as well.
I understand. And the uptick in Watershed billing calls, I've also had an uptick in those emails as well. Do we have any understanding of why that? I guess I should follow with the department on that one.
That would be great, yes.
You mean Commissioner, you're not going to get all of this information from me. So I guess I'm looking at DCOO and, and folks if you can help us get those numbers because I will say we've had trouble understanding with some of the departments on why these are issues. So to whatever degree you can assist. So to whatever degree you can assist, be greatly appreciated. And I know, I know, I know, we've had changes in leadership, so I completely get it. But to whatever degree you can help us understand so that we can better convey to our constituents because, I don't know about y'all, but this is the most underwater my, my office has been and my district has been. So, yes. And my last question, I was, I'm both, I'm both happy to see the increase in use of the Housing Help Center, but also it is a sad note that clearly demand is up. And Mike, I'm curious about, given that, do we, and maybe this is not a question for you, but I will take a look at everyone else, understanding because you're showing us that demand, understanding how resources should be allocated within that department to ensure that we are meeting the demand that will inevitably grow over these next few years as we see federal clawbacks, especially from Atlanta Housing and others, as, you know, which will inevitably lead to more Section 8 property going offline. So to whatever degree, this data has really shown us the questions we need to be asking. So that's going to be the first thing that I would like to know as a result of this. So I really thank you for giving us the numbers that will allow us to ask us, ask more pointed questions.
And so just as a reminder, 311 only handles housing referrals. We do have a, a meeting with Office of Constituent Services next week to talk a little further about some of the challenges they are having. And so hopefully by next report, we'll have a date or a plan forward.
Understood. And once again, really thank you for, for the report.
You're welcome.
Greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. And the council president, Doug Shipman, has been with us the entire time and he has the floor.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner. I just have a quick data question between slides three and four. On three, it shows the call volume FY '24 and '25. And then on slide four, you have the evening shift call volume, which is obviously primarily in FY '25. Are the numbers on page three inclusive or exclusive of page four's numbers?
It doesn't include it.
So, so page four is additive to page three, is that correct?
Right.
So in essence, the call volume has actually gone from 304 up by 126,000 plus.
Right.
Okay. I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify that it was not inclusive and that actually volume is way up because you've expanded hours, which makes a lot of sense.
Right, exactly.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Nope, that's it.
All right, Mr. Juan. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, and I'll be quick. And yes, when you started going through the data slides, I was real excited because I feel like these, yeah, these are the data points that we need to be understanding and using when we're, you know, the administration's making their operational decisions and we're trying to make our policy and other kind of monitoring and just follow, tracking activities. I'm just going to make one comment is that I'm not sure who all will be sitting here in this committee next year, but I would suggest that before we start the budget process, that we do a comprehensive report out like you've done today in FY '24, '25 and '26 to date because every one of these lines has a message in it. It is either operationally, we're doing something wrong. I like the fact that you mentioned resource allocation because as I'm, I see the Transportation Commissioner out here, so I'll just highlight that. To me, the potholes one means that we, we are, we're not properly allocating our capital money there. And the other two are probably operational, either staffing or contractor. So I think, again, that's the value in what you, you're doing. And we've got to, as council, really start getting these data points right at the time that we can take the right action to support the decisions financially, operationally, and to me, that the best time of that, it would be right before budget. So I will just challenge you to help remember and who, like I said, whoever is at this committee next year, we get the SLAs, we get the budget book, but this has, to me, this is the missing piece that will really highlight the questions we should be asking during that process. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, I yield. Thank you, Ms. Overstreet.
So in that same vein, I mean, I literally put your presentation in my blue folder, that's a big deal.
Uh-oh.
And because I didn't view it as a 311 failure, I viewed it as a snapshot of the things that we need to be paying attention to. I think you did an excellent job of putting together our, our real numbers and I, I just commend you for that. So I didn't look at it like, yeah, and now, you know, Commissioner is responsible for, you know, one more pothole or, or more call volume up or whatever. I really think you did an excellent job of showing like a report card of what we're doing as a city around our 311 services. And so, kudos to you for that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, Ms. Bakhtiari, and then I'll hit cleanup.
Sorry, one quick question because I had missed the pad numbers and so I just wanted to ask really quickly. I was wondering if that was because of the intake process as a result of that and I wanted to know if the process is still, call 311 and an email is sent to pad's inbox?
Yes, so we still call 311 and then we dispatch a pad immediately while we're on the phone with the customer that called in.
Thank you, didn't, that, there's a standard protocol on the intake process, how long and, do we know how long it takes from email to assignment to?
From call to assignment because typically, it doesn't take long. I mean, sometimes less than an hour, less than 30 minutes because they're in the meeting area. So we have not seen long hold patterns at all, yeah.
Understood, thank you.
All right, well, you've worked real hard to make 311 better and better and better and it's getting better. As has been pointed out, we're in no immediate danger of hitting perfection just yet, but we recognize the reality that in a lot of this, you're only as good as some of the operating departments allow you to be. So we, we understand that and, you know, it must really be tough being the messenger. In lieu of all the other questions I could ask about this or that outlying number, here's something that's occurred to me today that probably should have occurred to me a long time ago. For departments where, you know, SLA success was at 35% last year and 34% the year before that, and it's, you know, 38% the year before that, and they're currently tracking at 36.5%. This is not a question for you unless you want to share your observations and just general opinions. This is a question we, we should put to some of these specific commissioners. Are some of these SLAs just completely unrealistic to begin with?
Yes, but I can say this, many of the departments are assessing their SLAs now and there will be some changes forthcoming, but, but we are reviewing it on a regular basis.
All right, I mean, that's a COO question and in terms of individual departments that are always down there in the 30s, that's a conversation we need to have with them on camera or off camera because I, I think some cases, this is just, you know, people are just trying to please other people and trying to be outrageously optimistic and it's not working out. It's not a great strategy. All right, does anyone have anything else? Commissioner, we will let you get back to answering calls.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you all.
We appreciate you. And now, we're all ready at first reads. Mr. Evans, take it away.
Item number three is 2501458, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee to correct the recording of franchise fee collections from the Department of Public Works to the Atlanta Department of Transportation and to allow for the transfer of fees collected from the Department of Public Works to be transferred to the Atlanta Department of Transportation and for other purposes. Item number four, 2401459, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee to amend the Atlanta City Code, Part Two, Chapter 114, Article Nine, Division 14, Section 114-415, to provide that upon separation from the city, employees shall receive a lump sum cash payment in lieu of any unused accrued annual leave. To amend the provisions related, relating to accumulated vacation leave and for other purposes. Item number five, 2501460, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to waive the competitive source selection requirements contained in Article 10 of the Procurement Code to allow the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs to enter into agreements with specifically curated performers, artists and sponsors for the 2025 Elevate Public Art Festival in Atlanta and directing that all festival revenues and expenses be deposited and expended from the accounts listed below and for other purposes. Item number six, 2501461, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute all appropriate documents granting PPP Metropolitan LLC, a Georgia limited liability company of stormwater drainage easement consisting of approximately 500, excuse me, 5,529 square feet over, through and upon a portion of city-owned real property located at 2353 Metropolitan Parkway, also known as Zone 3 Main Precinct for the purpose of installing a stormwater drainage infrastructure, waiving any conflicting provisions of Article 10, Division 14, Subsection 3 of the Atlanta Code, Atlanta City Code ordinances and for other purposes. Item number seven, 2501462, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute a contractual agreement or a sole source agreement, a record management system with ImageTrend LLC pursuant to Section 2-1191 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances on behalf of Atlanta Fire Rescue Department for a term of three years with three one-year renewal options in an amount not to exceed $1,044,722.32 over the course of three years. All contracted work we charge to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Item number eight, 2501463, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee waiving the competitive source selection provisions contained in Section 2-1187 of Article 10 of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances as well as any other conflicting code provisions. Authorize the mayor or his designee to execute the First Amendment to the special procurement number listed here with Comcast Network Fiber Services with Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC on behalf of the Department of Atlanta Information Management and the Department of Watershed Management to add departments of fire and rescue, Atlanta Police, Parks and Recreation, Public Works, Correction, Corrections and the Mayor's Office as authorized users and to extend the term of the agreement one year effective from February 26, 2026 through February 25, 2027 and to add funding in an amount not to exceed $1,243,010.00. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Funds Department Organization account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
All right, thank you. We'll take those up in our next sitting. That takes us to our regular agenda, beginning with 2501417 and I will move to bring forward a substitute. Second by Hillis, let's open that vote. The vote is open? The vote is closed? All right, the caption is the same. This is an ordinance by Finance Exec to amend the Atlanta City Code sections indicated to reflect updated laws and procedures to improve customer service standards, to increase operational efficiencies, to levy a more appropriate occupation tax and to better reflect the cost to the city for the issuance of the occupation tax certificates, to amend the occupation tax table and for other purposes. We need to accept and hold this as we, a, a public hearing is required, is that correct, Mr. CFO? All right, motion's been made and seconded to hold. Who seconded that? Mr. Juan. The vote is open? Vote is closed, six A's, zero N's. All right, the eyes have it. 2501429 is an ordinance by members Westmoreland, Collins and Bond authorizing a donation in an amount not to exceed $3,000 from the Post Two at-large care forward account to the Upper West Side Improvement District to support West Side Stride and its focus on designing safe, people-oriented streets pursuant to the section of the charter listed here and for other purposes. Motion to approve. Second by Bakhtiari. Let's open the vote. The vote is open? The vote is closed, six A's, zero N's. 2501430 is an ordinance by Mr. Westmoreland, Ms. Collins and Mr. Bond authorizing a donation in an amount not to exceed $1,000 to the Little Five Points Alliance pursuant to the same section of the, of the charter listed here. I will propose an amendment to add $500 from the Council President's carry forward. But we amend, that's on the amendment? All right, on the motion to amend, we have a motion and a second. Yeah, we're adding, yeah, $500 from Council. The vote is open? The vote is closed. Vote is closed, that's favorable, or it's amended, rather. Motion by Juan, second by Shook, to adopt as amended. Let's open the vote. The vote is open? Vote is closed, six A's, zero N's. 2501430 was, is an ordinance by Westmoreland, Juan and Bakhtiari authorizing a donation in an amount not to exceed blank to the Community Foundation for Greater Atlanta pursuant to the charter section listed here to support LGBTQ outreach and the Mayor's Youth Scholarship Program and for other purposes and understand your desire is to?
Move forward with no recommendation on condition of section three. We're going to, we're going to add. Do you want to amend it now? Okay. I'll second.
You want to just send this forward as is and that'll give us time to collect whoever wants to, plus money?
Not yet, they're working on it.
Well, for now, can we, can I make a motion to amend to include Councilmember Overstreet and Councilmember Hillis's name?
Amos, you want in?
And Councilmember Amos.
Oh, and we've been joined by Byron Amos. Sure, put me on there.
And Councilmember Shu, who will be attending Pride today this year, so he should throw his money in.
That motion to amend that is open? Okay, motion to amend. That vote is closed, six A's, zero N's, it's been amended to add the sponsors. The motion now is to send this forward on condition of receiving a substitute. Second by Ms. Bakhtiari, let's open that vote. Vote is closed, it's six A's and zero N's. Thank you. 2501435 is an ordinance by Mr. Lewis waiving the code sections listed here, authorizing the mayor or his designee to acquire from Fulton County in the state of Georgia real property located at 2605 Fairburn Road in the location listed, the tax ID listed, in exchange for conveying certain adjacent real property owned by the City of Atlanta and located in the location cited in order to clear title of said properties, to execute all documents necessary to effectuate said property transfers and as always for other purposes. Yeah, could we get a presentation?
Good afternoon. Cheryl Glenn Snooks, Director of Real Estate and Dean, Department of Real Assets Management. The purpose of this legislation is to authorize the city to transfer a portion of property located at 47 Cleveland Avenue, which is a portion of the Cleveland Avenue Park in exchange for, will be transferring the property to Fulton County in exchange for county property located at 2605 Fairburn Road. That property would be for public use with APD or APD services and to create a presence in the area.
For a mini precinct?
I'm not sure exactly what the use will be, but it will be for APD services.
Go ahead.
First of all, move approval. This is located, I believe, directly across from our new fire station. Thirty-six.
It's down, it's down the street, yes.
And I'm familiar, so move approval.
All right, there's been a motion, a proper second. I do have a question though, so when I see that this is to...
when I see that this is to clear a title, what is the, what is the flaw or problem that we're seeking to remedy?
It's not to clear title. There is, the Cleveland Avenue Library is on Park property, and so Park has confirmed that they can transfer that property over to Fulton County. They've been there for years, and they should not be on Park's property.
Anyone with other questions? All right, we've got a motion to proper second. Let's open the vote.
The vote is open? The vote is closed, six shades and zeros and aces.
Okay. Under resolutions, we have twenty-five R thirty-seven eighty-two, authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute the Second Amendment to the CP indicated ADP implementation and integration with Automatic Data Processing, Inc., on behalf of DOF, to add funding in an amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from, et cetera. Motion to approve by Juan, seconded by Bakhtiari. Let's open the vote.
The vote is closed, six shades, zeros, and aces.
The ayes have it. I'll make a motion to bring forward substitute for number, item number fifteen. Second by Bakhtiari. Let's open that vote.
Vote is closed, six shades, zeros, and aces.
All right. That brings us to, oh, the substitute's before us. Oh, no, the substitute's up, yeah. The, this is, oh, the caption's different. Authorizing the mayor's designee to execute Amendment Number Three to correct the resolutions listed, to indicate that the dollar amount listed shall be encumbered annually, and to exercise renewal option one for the RFP indicated citywide elevator service repair and maintenance with TK Elevator Corp. on behalf of Enterprise Assets Management, AFRD, APD, Aviation Corrections, Parks and Rec, Public Works, and Watershed effective the seventeenth of November of twenty-five through November sixteenth of twenty-six in an amount not to exceed three hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from, et cetera. Questions or comments?
I'm just gonna make a comment. I'll support this, but I just want us, I wanna highlight, especially since the new Chief Procurement Officer was here today. This contract was originally done in twenty-twenty-two for two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and we've amended it twice, once to add nine hundred thousand dollars and another to add seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And what we're doing today, and rather than those being a one-time thing, we're going back and saying that's actually gonna be an annual increase now. And so this is, in my opinion, yet another example of a contract that does not even vaguely resemble what it started off as. And so I'm, when I see these, I'm gonna lift them up because I think these just serve as good examples for Ms. Houston as she's going through her review of the processes over in procurement, because, yeah, it just, I think, is emblematic of, of some of the challenges that we're facing with our processes as well as the optics from the external. All that said, I will make the motion to approve on substitute, but I just want to acknowledge that's what's going on here.
All right, and I also have a clothespin over my nose for the same reasons, and I've discussed this with the new procurement officer. I agree, we, we have been entirely overly nurturing when it comes to a lot of this. You know, and I will say, gotta keep up with the elevators. I mean, the one, the one we all use, I mean, I'm always glad when it opens. I'm not always sure I'm gonna be in the same building. Yes.
Thank you. And I just had a quick question. Is it, and I don't know if one of them asked us already, is it true that we only have two inspection companies in the state?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Two elevator inspection companies in the state, is that true? That we just have two? Stay wide.
I can't validate that, but, yes.
I'm genuine, I'm just generally curious because that was my understanding. So I guess we'll chat GPT it or something and figure it out. So, thank you.
All right, let's vote. Is there a second or?
The vote is open? Vote is closed, six shades, zeros, and aces.
The ayes have it. Twenty-five R thirty-seven eighty-four is a resolution by Finance Exec authorizing the mayor to execute Amendment Number Two to the RFP listed citywide relo services with Leslie Regis, Inc., Atlanta, or doing business Atlanta Cargo Transportation Company, and Beltman Group Incorporated to add funding for relocation projects on behalf of Dean in an amount not to exceed two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars for each agreement. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the sources indicated. Motion to approve by Juan, seconded by Hillis. Let's open the vote.
The vote is open? The vote is closed, six shades, zeros, and aces.
All right, twenty-five R thirty-seven eighty-five is a resolution by Finance Exec authorizing funds to be added to the co-op, a number of which is listed, Orkiva Cloud Services with Vertisoft LLC utilizing the listed GSA contract on behalf of DOF for a term of ninety days effective June nineteenth of this year and ending September sixteenth of this year in an amount not to exceed four hundred and three thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-two cents. All contracted work being charged to and paid from, et cetera, and we need to take the companion held piece. Is that correct?
There's related legislation in the held section, but we can take that when we get to the held.
Okay, well, all right, let's do that. Motion to approve. I'll second that.
Thank you.
Motion by Juan. Let's open the vote.
The vote is open? The vote is closed, six shades, zeros, and aces.
Thank you. Let's take eighteen and twenty together. Eighteen is twenty-five R thirty-seven eighty-six, resolution by Finance Exec authorizing the mayor on behalf of Dean and other city departments to exercise the first renewal for the RFP indicated. This is citywide architectural, architectural planning, design, engineering, and construction phase services, a small for, or with Corrigan Associated, Inc., Fitzgerald Collaborative Group, Harris and Smith, Low Rowhead Fox, and Piper O'Brien and Hare Architects, and Praxis Three, and JW Robinson, for a term of one year on a task order basis, not to exceed five million dollars per agreement. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from, et cetera. Twenty, that's the same thing with different vendors. This is twenty-five R thirty-seven eighty-eight. It authorizes the mayor on behalf of Dean and other departments exercise the first renewal for the RFP indicated citywide architectural planning, design, engineering, and construction. This is Group B Large with Dream ATL, Joint Venture, Pon G, GVS A, and SSOE, SNW Plus Chasm on a task order basis for a term of one year in an amount not to exceed twenty-five million dollars per agreement. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from, et cetera. All right, motions to approve. I'll second that. Questions or comments? Let's vote.
The vote is open? The vote is closed, six shades, zeros, and aces.
Thank you. That takes us. Twenty-five R thirty-seven eighty-seven, I will move to bring forward a substitute seconded by Mr. Amos. Let's open the vote.
The vote is open? Vote is closed, six shades, zeros, and aces.
All right, the caption's different, and it reads, "A substitute resolution by Finance Exec authorizing the mayor to execute the second renewal option for the agreement indicated. Maintenance and services for E nine-one-one Premier One CAD and Premier One Mobile with Motorola Solutions on behalf of AIM, APD, AFRD, and Aviation for a term of one year effective from October sixteenth of this through October fifteenth of twenty-six in amount not to exceed one, where is it, one million, one hundred thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the sources indicated." Go ahead, please.
This was just if you had any questions regarding substitution?
All right, motion by Juan, seconded by Bakhtiari. Let's vote.
The vote is open? Vote is closed, six shades, zeros, and aces.
All right, we've got a number of duels that have come our way, first of which is twenty-five R thirty-seven forty-three, resolution by Mr. Amos to affirm the City of Atlanta's commitment to remedy long-term blight in multifamily residential developments to authorize the city attorney to initiate eminent domain proceedings in accordance with the state law code listed here against multifamily properties in which a substantial portion has remained in a state of blight for ten or more years to express the city's intent to redevelop such properties as affordable housing where feasible and for other purposes. And this comes forward favorably from CD. Questions, comments, motion? Motion to approve by Amos, seconded by Bakhtiari. If there's nothing else, let's open the vote.
The vote is open? Vote is closed, six shades, zeros, and aces.
Twenty-five R thirty-seven forty-four is also a paper of Mr. Amos's. It comes forward favorably out of CD. This is a resolution by Mr. Amos authorizing the commencement of eminent domain proceedings consisted with the state and city law for the acquisition of Magnolia Park and Azalea Gardens to remedy blight and advance affordable housing goals in the state of Atlanta and for other purposes. Motion to approve by Amos, seconded by Hillis. Let's open the vote.
The vote is open? The vote is closed, six shades, zeros, and aces.
All right, the other one is twenty-five oh fourteen hundred, ordinance by Ms. Collins authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city to execute a non-exclusive franchise agreement between the city and Google Fiber for a term of ten years with two successive two-year renewal options to encroach on and occupy the public right of way for the purpose of constructing, installing, repairing, maintaining, operating, and if necessary, removing the fiber to the premise network and related network facilities to offer broadband services and voice-over Internet protocol services to residents and businesses within the City of Atlanta to require a franchise fee in the amount of two percent and for other purposes. This was the subject of several sessions in the CU Committee and comes forward favorably. The motion is going to be to send this forward favorably on condition of receiving a substitute that will provide some data and extra language that came at the request of the CU Committee. So that's my motion. Second by Juan. If there's nothing else, let's open that vote.
The vote is open? Vote is closed, six shades, zeros, and aces.
We have a plethora of held papers, beginning with twenty-five oh eleven forty-seven, ordinance by Finance Exec, amend the section indicated here to set the ad fulorem tax rate for the general levy, bonded indebtedness levy, parks levy, education levy, special tax district levy, and the Atlanta Beltline Special Services District levy based on every one thousand dollars apart thereof of the value of all real and personal property to provide that the tax rates established herein shall remain fixed until amended or repealed. To repeal ordinance twenty-five oh eleven forty-eight and for other purposes. So I need to make a motion to bring forward the substitute that plugs in that repeal ordinance. Second by Juan. Let's open that vote.
The vote is open? Vote is closed, six shades, zeros, and aces.
Motion by Juan, seconded by Bakhtiari. If there's nothing else, let's open that vote. Approve on substitute. Oh, blay that, Mr. Juan.
This is maybe for the CFO. The provision for the Stitch SSD, what happens in this space where the federal funding for that project is still in limbo? I mean, I guess we, this allows us to levy it, we'll collect it and hold it, but if for some reason the, I mean, if the, well, I, is there a provision to be able to return that if for some reason the project does not come to fruition?
So I believe that this allowed, so will allow for the collection of the SSD starting now. There's needs right now that the, as the committee needs for some additional work, some planning, some additional site review. So they're gonna continue doing that work utilizing this funding. What the issues coming with around the larger construction of, of the site, which is gonna require federal funding.
All right, we good? If so, let's open the vote.
The vote is open? Vote is closed, six shades, zeros, and aces.
Thank you. That jumps us to thirty-eight. Twenty-five R thirty-four ninety-six, I will move to bring forward substitute. Second by Juan. Let's open that procedural vote.
Vote is open? Vote is closed, six shades, zeros, and aces.
Caption reads as follows, "A substitute resolution by Finance Exec authorizing the mayor to execute a co-op, which is indicated here, Orkiva Cloud Services with Vertisoft LLC on behalf of Department of Finance pursuant to the code section listed here, utilizing a GSA contract numbered listed, rate term of three years with one, two-year renewal option in amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-two cents annually. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from, et cetera." Bring forward the substitute.
Substitute is in front of you. Now is the time to vote on it.
Motion has been made and properly seconded?
To approve on substitute. Let's open. That vote is open? That vote is closed, six shades and zeros and aces.
All right, that takes us to item forty, motion to bring forward substitute. Second by Juan. Let's open the vote.
Vote is open? Vote is closed, six shades, zeros, and aces.
Thank you. This is substitute by Finance Exec. Resolution by Shook, substituted by Finance Exec, authorizing the Commissioner of DWM to adjust water and sewer service charges on certain customer accounts in accordance with the city section of code listed here in the amount of two hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and fifty-five cents. Motion to approve on substitute. Second by Bakhtiari. Let's open that vote. Would all members please vote? The vote is closed, six shades, zeros, and aces. And twenty-five R three-six-six-zero requires substitute. I'll make that motion. Second by Bakhtiari. Let's open that vote.
Vote is closed, six shades, zeros, and aces.
This is a substitute resolution by Finance Exec, resolution by Shook. This is a substitute resolution by Finance Exec, resolution by Shook as substituted by Finance Exec authorizing the CFO to refund customers for overpayments to water and sewer accounts in an amount not to exceed $185,362.32. All funds being charged to and paid from, et cetera. Motion to approve on substitute. All right, second by Mr. Hillis. Let's open the vote.
The vote is open? Vote is closed, six yeas and zero nays.
Mr. Evans, have I missed anything?
All items have been acted on.
Well, we don't need to tell the public that. All right, any announcements? Hearing none. We're adjourned. Thank you.